Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith, the mayor of the city of Vader. It's a high privilege and pleasure to officially call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order, which we'll do so at 6:00. And I'm grateful to all present, particularly our elected officials. We will proceed with the roll call, which is just summarily carried out by our city clerk.
I forgot to mention this to you, but since we've been going through and tracking all the recordings that we have, we found that it's a good idea to say the date. So it's November 17, 2016, city council meeting.
You'll add that to our call order.
Yes, I should put that on there.
Wonderful.
Okay. Andy Wilson?
Present.
Jason Daley?
He's indicated that he's had a scheduling conflict and won't be able to make it this evening. Just wanted to ask that it would be excused.
Okay. Joe Schei?
Present.
Mike Parsons?
Present.
Ruth Creer?
Present.
And Mayor Ken Smith?
Also present. So with that, we do have quorum despite Mr. Daley's absence. So we will proceed. And would at this time invite all to please rise for our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Parsons, would you do this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll proceed with our mayor's report. I would like to officially express appreciation to Mr. Schei, who was, as Mayor pro tem, has directed the last two city council meetings that I wasn't able to be at.
You're welcome.
I was not here physically, but was with you in spirit. But I thank you all for the work that you accomplished in my absence. I don't have a lot of particular items, but there was one in particular that I didn't have published. But I wanted to make, as a matter of public record, an accomplishment by a member of his council. And it's been brought to my attention that Mr. Andy Wilson has received a certificate from the Association of Washington Cities acknowledging his completion of over 30 hours of training in his council position and other positions you've held as we've served this community. So this is a copy of what it looks like, and I just felt it would be appropriate to make the public aware of his accomplishment. Get him round.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had another one of them things the other day. Not quite that one.
Now, I don't want to embarrass you, but now you're 92 years old.
No, 91.
91, okay then, all right. That's a nice odd number, but you might be one of the most senior elected officials in city management in the United States, for what we know. So, congratulations. As well, I won't get into particulars, but I felt it would be appropriate to let the council members know that we are continuing to work through the issues related to the vandalism that took place at City Park. And we've been talking to Mrs. Creer about that matter. And I'm comfortable at the moment with the action that's been taken and that will be taken in the future to ensure that the individuals involved have a sense of responsibility for their actions and that they're given a chance to provide restitution and maybe even assist in the re-establishment of the memorial for the boy who was at the heart of that activity. So, I don't know, Mrs. Creer, if you wanted to make a mention of...
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, all right. But if anybody has additional questions or would like to ask me about it, feel free outside this public meeting. That's about all I had on my mayor's report. So we'll proceed with any council commentary or reports that you might want to add at this time.
No.
Okay. And now we'll proceed then with the approval of this evening's agenda. I don't have any changes that I, were, that I would like to add, so if anybody would like to make a change, now would be the time to do it.
I would make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for 11/17/2016.
Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion to approve the agenda as it is currently written. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Sorry. Now, we had a vote. All in favor, again, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? See, that motion is carried. All right. Our next agenda item is a special report.
About minutes?
I do that all the time, don't I? Yeah, we'd better go back and approve our minutes from our previous meeting, from November 10th. Hopefully you've had a chance to review those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for city council meeting and budget workshop 11/10/2016.
Okay. Mr. Parsons has submitted a motion to approve those minutes as noted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Creer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Now you'll get to the presentation from our two representatives of Civil West. We're anticipating this. If you want to provide introductions, feel free.
Mayor, do we need to do the vouchers?
No.
Never mind.
That was just an explanation as to why they're...
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Matt Waddington, Civil West Engineering. I have Christie Steiner from Civil West also. We're from Albany, Oregon. We're part of the, part of the team that's reviewing the wastewater facilities plan update. In addition, I guess I'll start off, I apologize that we had a slideshow prepared, but our projector decided not to work once we got here, so we printed out slides.
Have some available for the public here. Thank you, Jill, for saving us there.
In addition to us, we have a few people in our Coos Bay office that are working on this as well. Marlin Gavnor, who's our Washington PE, Gareth Hall, who's our incumbent president, and Bill Bover, who's our wastewater process guru. So, we're all putting in time and trying to get a solution that's going to work for you guys.
So, the agenda for our small part of the meeting, we just kind of wanted to go over what we see as our mission and what we want to accomplish in the project. And then walk through kind of some of what you've already seen to remind you what we've done along the way, because it's been a long road. And talk about a couple of new things that we're considering. And then just briefly run through a list, kind of what we're looking at as far as new treatment alternatives. And then we'll give you guys a chance to ask questions and give us some feedback. So, when we looked at this, we, you know, a lot of work's already been put into this by a couple of different consultants and a lot of effort by the city as well. So we wanted to go back through, we looked at what's been recommended, so we're not reinventing the wheel, and kind of took a fresh look at what's been done. And based on that, we looked at what's working, and then we wanted to consider different ways to look, different approaches to the problem, see if we could find some new solutions. And we think we have a couple of really good ideas. And then, most importantly, we want to find the most viable, cost-effective solution. Because one of the biggest issues so far has been everything is just very expensive. So in 2004 and 2009, both had the same recommendation that came out of the facilities planning for an oxidation ditch. And, you know, bringing that cost up to current cost would be about $10.9 million to construct that at this point. And when you take into consideration the operation and maintenance that you'll have to do every year, you know, after 20 years, the cost of that is $14.5 million. So at this point, it's not something we're considering any further. In the last report, we looked at, or the consultant looked at Lagoon upgrades with a discharge to the Kowalski River instead of the Olequa, which is where you discharge now. But due to new restrictions that are being put on the Kowalski, it's no longer a viable option. It's very far away from your treatment plant, and you'd have to treat to the, to the same standards that you will for the Olequa. So we are not considering Kowalski discharges any further either. The most viable solution the last report came up with then would be the in-ground activated sludge and keep your discharge on the Olequa River. And as you can see, we've kind of broken out the cost and then brought it forward one year to this year's cost, and it's about $8.7 million. Then taking into consideration the operation and maintenance, it jumps up to about 12 over 20 or 30. So our goal is to find something that's cheaper than all of these and that solves the problem, you know, the big I and I issue that the sewers needs to have, and find a better treatment solution for you guys.
So a couple of the alternative approaches, and we talked about these when we came out for a kickoff meeting and when we did our presentation, our statement of qualifications, was to use, to replace your existing gravity collection system with a low-pressure collection system, where everybody would have a small pump in their, in their front yard or backyard that would pump into a small pressure system that would take the wastewater to the treatment plant. And what that does is reduce the flow going to the treatment plant from, from a peak of what you have now, which is about 1.8 million gallons a day, as a peak flow, down to a peak flow of about 150,000 gallons a day. So about 1/15 of what you have now. And so your treatment plant can then be that much smaller, because instead of treating, being sized to treat 1.8 million gallons, be sized to treat 150,000 gallons, something in that magnitude. So that, that's an option that could save a lot of money on treatment costs. Now, there are costs upfront to get the gravity, the low-pressure system installed, but we're going to look and see if those costs offset each other and how that lines up. And we're not, we're not quite there yet, but... The other option that we're looking at is doing a land, land treatment, which is, which is basically taking your treated, treated effluent, and instead of discharging it into the creek, you discharge it onto land. The most prominent piece of land that we've been thinking about was, was the timberland across the railroad tracks. There's lots of land, you could take it over there and spray it on the side of the hill, and, and you can, you can do that with less treatment than what would be required if you're going to discharge into the river. So, want to talk about those a little bit more. Next slide is the low-pressure collection system. Again, I apologize, but this is a pretty neat map of Vader with a whole system drawn on there, and you can't see it here, and I apologize. But we've modeled, we've modeled what it would take to come up with a solution that would, that would provide service to everybody in the city who has sewer service now. What this doesn't have right now is sewer service to, to those parcels within the city that currently do not have sewer service across the railroad tracks. But that can be tied in relatively easily at a later date, or, or be done with the original installation. But like I said, this uses a lot, utilizes a series of grinder pumps that have a, have a storage chamber. As you use water in your house and goes down the drain, it fills up the, the vault to get to a point where it triggers the pumps. The pumps turn on and pump it to the treatment plant. And every single house and business has one of these, and, and they're all hooked together so that not everybody's is going to turn on at the same time. The wastewater is, is ground into a, basically a slurry, so you don't have any, any large solids going through there, so you can use pretty small pipes to do this. So it's, it's pretty, pretty cheap to install relative to installing a new gravity system, but it's still, there's, there's cost. The key benefit on this is that it totally eliminates your inflow and infiltration, your I and I. That's why you have peaks that are up in the 1.8 million gallons per day. And that's a, that's, you know, when it's, when it's raining cats and dogs and everyone flushes the toilet at the same time and all the stars align, you have a flow of 1.8 million gallons per day. And that has to be, that has to be treated, it has to be accounted for, the treatment plant. And so what this does is take that flow down to a base flow of about 50,000 gallons a day. Now, there's still going to be some, some peaks in the mornings, everybody takes a shower and flushes their toilets, so you're going to have higher flows in the mornings than you are in the afternoons. But, but those peaks are, like I said, in the magnitude of 150,000 gallons a day instead of 1.8 million. It improves your treatment efficiency, because you have basically the exact same amount of flow coming into your treatment plant every day. You can design a treatment plant that treats just that, it's that size, it doesn't have to be oversized to treat these huge peaks coming in, and so it can do it much more efficiently. So your treatment costs go down. The downside of it is, is that you basically abandon your existing gravity collection system. You can, you can repurpose it into a storm drain system throughout town and put a new outfall on it, but, but the work that you've done on that is, is going away. The installation...
I have a question about that. My understanding was that if there was a portion of the system that was in-ground, or you could put your new system inside the pipes, is that, is that not feasible?
We could. The problem is, is that you have to have a service to every house, and so by the time you dig up to make that connection at every house, it might not be feasible. But we can certainly look at that and see, if there are, there are sections that were going from, from here and the next house is 1,000 feet away, it would make sense to do something. In the heart of town, where you have a house every 40 feet, it's probably not worth it. The next drawback is just that it costs money to install a system. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be the bigger part of the cost. If, if you end with a system, you're going to end up spending probably more money on your new collection system than you will on your treatment plant. But we're going to be looking at total cost and comparing total cost to what total cost was on other systems. So it'll be included in, in part of the discussion. And the last drawback is that it, it'll require probably 10-foot by 10-foot easement on, on everyone's property, just so you can install the, the system. And on the next slide, it kind of shows, on the right-hand side of that slide, there's a vault. And that vault would go on the, on the front or back, wherever the, the connection is on, on property. And you would need an easement around that so the city has, has access, so we can do maintenance on it. The pumps are generally good for 10 or 15 years, so if you have, if you have 300 pumps in town, odds are you're going to end up replacing 20 pumps a year. So you need to, to have access to that.
But the homeowners would not have to maintain it themselves, the city would do it.
Yeah, it would be a city, a city facility.
How, how much electricity, if this is electricity?
Yeah.
So power outages?
Yeah, the...
Part of the plan is a backup generator.
Yeah.
That will...
There are a couple of different options that you can run with this, and we're going to be looking at both. One is that you, you power this from the house. Whoever's house or business has a, has electrical feed out and it powers this pump. And so when the, when the power goes out, nothing, nothing happens. The vaults fill up. Typically, when the power goes out, you use less water. And if, if the vault, if the power's out for a couple of days, there, there are ways to run around with a portable generator and help these out. The other option is a, is kind of a centralized, you hook these all up to a, to a kind of a central grid power. The, the city would then provide the power for these, and, and there would be a series of four or five outlets throughout town that they would, that you could plug a larger generator in, and it would power a grid of 20 or 30 of these. You'd turn that on for, for an hour or two, let it all pump out, move on to the next one, and turn that on. These are sized, so that they generally would come on once or twice a day is all. And so the, the storage in there is enough to easily, you know, work for a day without having to pump. Again, typically when your power's out, you're not going to be taking showers or washing dishes, so you use less water. But that is one of the things that, that has to be thought of, and there are a couple of different ways to deal with that. The other alternative thing that I talked about was, was land treatment. And that's taking your, your effluent that's gone through the treatment plant, it still has to be treated at the treatment plant, but, but not to the level that would be required if you're going to discharge into the creek. So, so you treat this to a, to a, a lower level, less stringent requirements, so you can have a smaller treatment plant. And you then take that treated water and discharge it onto, onto land. And you can use it to irrigate, you can't irrigate food crops or anything like that, but a forest, a tree farm, you can irrigate. So there are options. We would, we've looked at, at a few different properties throughout town that, that might be appropriately sized. What we're going to be looking at is something between 20 and 40 acres that would be required to discharge this water. The first thing we looked at was the Warehouser property across the railroad tracks. So far, we haven't had a lot of luck talking with Warehouser and really getting them to recognize what we're looking for.
You didn't mean not a lot of luck.
We contacted their land use manager, and she just hasn't, she hasn't been very real responsive in, in getting back to us. So we're, we're looking for different avenues to go through to talk to maybe some of their people on their real estate side and their environmental side, to see what it would take to, to make an agreement like that happen.
Would it be helpful if city officials were to reach out to them, you think?
Potentially, yeah.
Probably.
Okay, let us know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. The, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, we have had some luck with the timber north, the timberland north of the city, but it's, it's about a mile away. So that would be a pretty long, it would be a mile-long pipeline versus crossing the river and the railroad tracks to get over to that timberland. And then there's also some properties north, in the north part of Vader, still in the city limits, that don't look very developed, and the property addresses for the owners are not in Vader themselves. So we're potentially looking at reaching out to those people and seeing if they're interested in partnering with the city to accept some of their effluent. We drafted a letter to send out to them that we wanted to get feedback from you guys, and you wanted on your letter that you think if it's better, it comes from, from you all.
And if you thought that we might want to compensate them for use of the land, factor it into the overall cost of the facility, if that were something that you think might provide some motivation, council might consider that, too.
We would certainly consider that and add that as a project cost. But definitely. But like Chrissy said, there's the, there's the timberland north of the city, and, and we reached out to them, and they've been very, they'd be happy to have it. But like she said, it's, it's about a mile-long pipeline, and it's not, you know, that's, in the grand scheme of things, may not be a big deal.
It was a million dollars a mile, is what we were told, to put an in-ground pipe from here to Winlock or to the river. But this pipe might be different.
Yeah.
What's the pipe, like, normal, what's a normal?
Well, again, it would depend. If we're going with a, a, a low-pressure collection system, then we could probably push this all through a four or six-inch pipe. If we're talking about keeping the, the existing collection system, we're doing a 12-inch pipe. And I'm not sure about those sizes, but that's the range, somewhere in that.
Is there a, is there like a hybrid of this? Where we use the, instead of having one at every house, we use a couple central stations and then pressurize it from there?
Yeah, there is, but, but then you're not really getting rid of all the I and I. Because a lot of the I and I is coming from, from service laterals, from main lines, that you wouldn't be getting rid of. And so then you wouldn't get the benefit of, of the low-pressure system, and you'd saw the cost of a lot of it, so...
One of the major challenges in treatment now, when, when you get those huge peaks, is the, the state requires you to remove 85% of beauty, which is, and when you get all of that I and I into your system, it dilutes, it dilutes the waste down so much that it's almost, to treat 85% of it, it's almost impossible, so you're violating every time. So it's, that would eliminate that problem.
It comes in cleaner than it goes out.
Yeah.
Because it's so diluted when it comes in.
And you're still not getting the permit, because you haven't removed 85% of it.
Right, yeah.
So the benefits of, of land treatment is the reduction in, in treatment costs, because you're not having to treat it to as, as fine of a level.
But just to be clear, we, this land treatment would still need the, the pump system. It's a combination.
So the, the pressure, the low, the low-pressure system is on the collection side, so that would get everybody's waste and bring it into the plant. So once it's treated and what would be a smaller treatment plant, instead of discharging all of the time to the river and having to treat down to those standards because it's water quality limited, the land treatment takes that finished, treated wastewater and would have its own smaller pipeline to pump it out to wherever it's going to be applied.
But that land use would only be during the summer months?
Correct.
It would only be during the summer months. And I, I think in, if I understood your, your question, does, do these have to be together? Does the land treatment have to go along with the, with the low-pressure collection? And it doesn't. These are, these are two separate things, and I'll kind of show you in the next slide how they, how they can kind of come together. Another thing, another benefit of the, of the land treatment is that it, it improves the quality of water in the, in the Olequa. So it's a, it's a benefit there, because you're not discharging anything during those summer months. Drawbacks are pretty simple. You have to find the land to do it and, and install the, the pipes to make it happen. So the, the next slide, I'm going to kind of show you on the, this whiteboard, I'll bring it over to you. So, the next slide, I'm gonna kinda show you on this whiteboard, I'll bring it over to you.
But aren't we, aren't we okay during the summer months right now? I mean.
No.
Oh, it's worse.
Still don't. No, actually, it's not, it's worse in the winter. We come close to meeting our guidelines, but we don't meet, still don't meet them a hundred percent in the summer.
The state is also imposing more additional limitations on the Olaqua next year, or they're ruling them out next year, for copper, ammonia, and temperature. So, with the current system you have, you wouldn't be able to meet any of the new restrictions. So, they have, something has to be done to get, to treat the water down. And it's easier in the winter to meet that because you have more flow and a stream to accept and mix that wastewater.
That's what I thought it was.
Whereas, in the summer, it's gonna be very difficult, especially the temperature, if you keep a lagoon system because you don't have much mixing going on, so it's a larger percent of your effluent that's gonna be better.
But you have different problems. In the winter, you have problems meeting that percent removal requirement that we talked about. In the summer, you have these absolute limits that you have to meet. So, there are issues both summer and winter. Well, the next slide, and you can get a cheat sheet there on the form, but if we use the existing gravity collection system, we have very low collection costs. And, sorry about my handwriting. If we discharge to the Olaqua Creek, we have high treatment costs. If we can add a low-pressure collection system, we have, we have collection costs, which we wouldn't otherwise. So, we have high collection costs. But we would have low treatment costs because we have less water that we're treating. If we look at land discharge, we have even lower. Land discharge with a low pressure, we have low treatment costs because we have, we're treating less water and we're not treating it as good. And then, if we do a land discharge with existing gravity system, we have, we have a higher cost, but not as high. So, it's sort of a neutral treatment cost. So far, you know, all the studies that you guys have had done, two thousand four, two thousand nine, two thousand fifteen, have all just been in this quadrant. This is all they've looked at. And so, what we're hoping, what we're excited about is this corner over here, where we're having less wastewater to start out with, and we're not having to treat it to as high standards. Either one of these other corners could still be an improvement over what we've had looked at before. But we're hopeful that the answer might come there. So, the, what we're gonna be looking at in terms of treatment are similar to what the previous studies have looked at, but we're gonna be looking at them in those different lights. So, we're gonna look at in-ground activated sludge, which is a biolact treatment. I think that was one of the recommended options in the.
Twenty fifteen.
It was the next highest in the twenty fifteen, after discharge of the cowlets. This was next best. So, we're gonna relook at that, given these new parameters and see if, see how that pans out. We'll look at a conventional activated sludge, which is, you know, what more than half the plants in the country use, which is just aeration and returning part of it to the beginning and aerating it, and then clarifying the water at the end and letting it go. We'll look at an option of a retrofit of your existing lagoons with a fixed film media. This would be putting something out there in the lagoon that the sludge can grow on. The sludge treats the wastewater, so if this has something to attach to, it works more efficiently. So, there's the option of putting that in the existing lagoons. There's also an option of a membrane bioreactor. These create very good quality effluent, but they're generally not very good at treating different volumes. So, if we go with a low-pressure system, a membrane bioreactor might be the way to go. And then, we'll look at a sequencing batch reactor. That'll, it's one of the more common and see them going in more places nowadays. But it takes a slug of wastewater, treats it, and lets it go as a slug, and then starts processing the next one. So, these are all pretty common treatment methods. Many of these have been looked at before, but again, we'll be looking at them in a little bit different light. That's what we have. Any questions?
Yeah, any of these options? Or you go ahead.
Basically, what I've seen here and your presentation, to me, my own opinion is you've given the citizens of Vader the lowest cost factor so far. And I was against this oxidation ditch, which would millions of dollars going up in private property and so forth. And this is my opinion, is that I think you've given the citizens of Vader a cheaper price so far that we've had presented to it, the council.
Well, we certainly, that's our goal, and we're gonna, hopefully, next time we come, we'll actually have prices to show you and kinda show where we stand against these other options.
Kathy has all the money.
But the question I had was that I haven't heard responded to is what level of replacement of the lining of the current system would need to be done with any part of the pressurized system and the land treatment?
Well, it's totally dependent on what sort of treatment we go with. If we're gonna reuse the existing lagoon, we have to, and the Department of Ecology requires that it either be double-lined or lined with leak detection, monitoring wells. And so, if we're gonna reuse that, we would have to reline it. If we use one of the other options, like a membrane bioreactor, that basically is gonna come as a separate unit. It's gonna, it's gonna sit somewhere, we would fill in the third lagoon maybe and just set it on top, and we wouldn't have any, we wouldn't need to reline anything because we wouldn't be reusing it.
Wonder, Kathy, do you think the DOE would force us to dry up those lagoons, the two, and clean them up? And include that as part of our.
Well, I think, like you said, it just depends on if you are, if you have wastewater or treated wastewater in one of those basins, they're gonna require a liner. If the treatment's happening in some concrete thing instead of the lagoons, then they would.
No problem.
Probably fill it in and build on top.
But would we have to clean out the?
You'd have to decommission the lagoons. And I assume that's gonna be part of the process.
Yeah, we have, fine soil removal will be part of anything that we do because it's something.
Perfect, okay.
And one of the, one of the options for doing that, and I think you guys have heard this before, there's a Blue Frog technology that's come and talked to you guys, and one of the things that they do is kind of a super digestion of that existing sludge. So, you could put that in there, run it for six, eight months, and it would reduce the amount of sludge in there by seventy-five percent. And then, what you're having to remove is only twenty-five percent of what's there now. We're gonna look at that as an option, see if it pans out. It may, it may not, but we'll certainly look at that as an option.
And we're communicating a lot with the Department of Ecology to make sure that they know what we're thinking and we understand what requirements they have to. So, whether it's a phased approach or.
Any raised eyebrows or furrowed?
No, they've been, they've been very, very helpful.
I have a couple of questions. Sarah?
Counsel, okay?
So, you were talking about the grinder pumps and how their life cycle's ten to fifteen years. So, you would include that regular replacement, that'd be part of the ongoing O and M cost. It'd be factored into the life cycle analysis.
And depending on how the electrical connections on those went, that electrical cost would be included also.
Right, and then also the, just the, the time and effort that it will take to get an easement from every property owner. Don't discount that, I guess is what I'm saying.
That's an option that we're, once that decision is made to go without options, that would be something we do.
Right, yeah.
It's not, it's a long process. We definitely understand that.
Yeah.
And if that's the route that goes, I think public outreach and education is gonna go a long way in getting buy-in from basically everybody that this is the way to go. There are, there are options. If there's a homeowner that just says flat out, no way, no how, you're not getting an easement, there are options to put these in the street, but it's a more expensive unit. It has to be traffic rated. It's just, it's a bit more expensive. So, if we can, we wanna put them on the property out of the street. But there are, there are ways around.
Most of our streets are so narrow, there's a big, big side of the street that's. Easement.
All right.
That's true, the easement comes up to my front door if you look at the map. There's plenty of room.
That may be, that may be a good point. We can look at that, and if we don't have to do an easement, it's obviously better.
I agree, most of our streets would have plenty of easement for you to work with. Could be a plus.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it really is, it's a hassle to do those. Takes a lot of time. People generally aren't happy about it. That's why I was hoping that some public outreach and education would help that process. But if we don't need to go through that, even better.
So, can I ask a clarification of that, then? Are, would the pressurized system start at the pump? Go from the pump out to the street? Or would the pressurized system, including the easement, go all the way to the house?
It would start at the pump.
It would start at the pump.
So, basically, everything from the house going out to the pump is gonna be your existing.
Gravity.
Gravity.
So, it's like a septic tank, a pressurized septic tank.
So, if someone has their downspouts already put this that, that's not gonna fix that problem.
It's not gonna fix that problem, right. So, we would wanna do a study and find those before we do this, because you're right.
Yeah, so the grinder pumps don't attenuate the flow at all? If there was leaky sewer line in the yard, it doesn't slow it down and just kinda dose it out slower or anything like that?
No, I mean, it holds it until it's filled, it's forty gallons or whatever size it is fills up, and then it pumps it out.
But you could look, I mean, if you see, if you see a particular house's pump starting way more than someone else's pump, you know that there's something probably, there's probably an issue there, and that's, that's something that raises your awareness about.
Are they set up to track that, to be able to tell how often it's coming on and how much?
That's it.
So, if the pump comes on a lot more than the actual amount of water that they're using, then we know that there's extra water laying in the power.
Yep.
They would have to pay the power bill? If the homeowner would pay the electric to power that pump?
Well, it would depend. I mean, there were two options for power. One, it hooks up to the house, and the other hooks to the city. If you go with the city option, the city pays for that, and that's included in part of the sewer bill. If it's connected to the house, then the homeowner pays that.
It's, I'm having a hard time figuring out what kind of pump we're talking about. Is it like a one-ten pump? Is it two-twenty? Is it, is it gonna kick on and the meter start spinning and?
No, they're pretty low-power. They're one-ten. I think they're three-quarter horsepower pumps, and they come on and they're gonna pump for three or four minutes and be done.
Oh, it pumps it out that fast?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it loud?
No, it's, it can hardly be heard when it's, when you're standing on top of the wall.
It's completely submerged underground.
Yeah, what you end up with is a lid that's probably about two and a half feet in diameter, fiberglass lid that would be over the top of it, and that's all you're gonna see. And if we move forward and this becomes viable, I'll bring in a lid, and we can throw it down the ground. You can look at it and see, see what it's gonna look like. But it looks like a, like a big irrigation valve.
And mow over the top of it?
You said to mow the top of it?
Mow over, is it?
Yeah, you could. You could set it down. The ones I'm thinking of that I've seen are kind of domed, but.
There's all kinds of options for lids, I'm sure.
I think that issue that, or the question Joe asked is really important about the sides who are lines. Because even though the city has taken some efforts over the years to replace those sides of the slides, especially for low-income individuals, they were able to get some grant funding for that. We know from past INI studies that there's a lot of water coming in from those lines. And so, so you might not be getting the, all the reductions that you think, I guess is.
I, you might not immediately, but it would also, in the long run, help you identify those.
Right, yeah, if you can track it and see that.
That's true. If they're all networked together and you know the flow, you'll know which ones are the violators with the extra water.
And you guys passed the ordinance that you need to, if your line is leaking, you must replace it, right? We'll probably wanna look at that and make sure it's worth it to go with this kind of setup.
And again, if we do this, we would recommend that one of the first things we do is a simple smoke test where we just, you know, both smoke the existing sewer system and see where it's coming out of people's downspouts on the side of their house.
We did a little.
The INI study, we've done that before.
Yeah, it's been a long time, but yes, we did have an old smoke study, I think, from ninety-nine or two thousand.
I was thinking it seemed sooner than that.
Well, then there was one that was recapped in, like, twenty-eleven or twelve.
The combined study with Winlock?
Yeah. They didn't do a lot of original work here. They kinda recap the past one, and they didn't do any smoke testing, though.
But it's a, it's a pretty simple and cheap test to come up and do. It takes, you do it in two days and identify any issues.
And a couple more, sorry. So, on the, for the land treatment option, if it, there needs to be some sort of agreement with the land owner. And typically, how long are those agreements? Is there any, I'm just wondering, is there a risk that, you know, maybe it's good for twenty years, but then twenty years from now, they don't wanna do it anymore? Or what, how do you structure that sort of agreement?
There's different options based on the land owner you're dealing with. You can do a long-term lease. The city can purchase that part of the property because the city does need to have restricted access to that area. Because you don't want people walking over where your sprinklers are and things like that. But that's something that is considered when you choose the property. Because you don't wanna, you don't wanna do it with a property you, who's gonna sell in two years? And then, you're like, oh man, here we go again. So, it's one of the things you consider when you're doing a selection in your property, for sure.
And so, the land acquisition costs, and if the city were to buy it, would be part of the capital cost estimate?
And can, there was another, was it you that was talking about another city that pumps it out, and then they do like a tree farm or?
Shalhallas, yeah.
Shalhallas. And then, so maybe that would help offset some of the costs if we were to purchase land and grow something on it?
That's a possibility.
And there's, it's, there's several. And there's, it's, there's several successful examples of, of land treatment in Washington, so I can certainly send you a couple case studies if it's something you're interested in seeing.
Got another one. So you were on the map, you said that this is the way out for all of the currently sewered properties. I believe there are some properties in town that are not currently sewered, is that right? And is, does, is the city's intent that you want everybody within the city limits to be sewed eventually? And so I'm wondering if the scope of work should be slightly changed to make sure that they're looking at, you know, what you really want the end thing to do, you don't want to come back later and add on even a few properties, yeah?
There'd be some pushback to that, but I, I would imagine that, that would be the desired outcome. Economy at scale, more users, lower the cost.
It just seems like now's the time to be thinking about that.
I, I mean, I, I agree, I think the argument against that would be that, that if, if, if there are people on, on the outskirts that, that want sewer now, their, their avenue to get sewer now is to pay for it, is to pay for a, a gravity collection, a, a manhole to, to get to them. And so, and if it's their cost now, should it be their cost with, with a new system? Well, but we'll look at it, I, I don't think it's going to make a huge difference in, in the cost. I think there is.
It might not make a huge difference in these numbers, but it will make a huge difference to the homeowner.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If I understood your explanation a couple meetings ago, this is one of the real positives of this system, is that it's easier to expand into undeveloped areas within the city limits.
Yeah, you can go downhill, uphill, across a valley.
It's a lot less expensive.
Yeah.
You have a lot of land for infill, and this, I think, would make development, which would be of great benefit to this community, easier. That's a positive selling point, in my opinion.
I got one more. So if they were, if, if the city looks at the cost estimates for a pressurized system and decided that's too much and they want to stay with gravity, then would, there's still the issue of there's a lot of I and I in the system. So would, I assume that you would want to keep tackling that, and so we'd want to think about some more collection system replacement costs in, probably in the overall cost estimate, because the best time to apply for that money would be at the same time you're applying for the treatment plant upgrades. So that's just something else to think about in advance too, if you do go that way. Does that make sense? Because you don't want to just, we already know it's bad and we don't, we want to keep working on it if it's not going to be replaced.
Would that be added, I mean, when it's all said and done, we're going to take all these different options, all these different quadrants and, and throw them all together and do a, see what's the cheapest? Would, would continued I and I, I don't know, I would think it would, but would that be included in, in those, in that comparison?
Well, I guess that's up to the council, but it's, I think it's something to think about now, you know? So you factor it in, what happens in comparisons? I mean, maybe you want to do a good thing without that.
I mean, one of your options, or two of your options is, is getting rid of I and I, so it's, it's very much addressing I and I. It makes sense to, to, to compare them, the concern is, is that I and I is sort of like chasing a ghost. You can, you can do something and not really see a big bang for your buck, and other times you may, you may have great luck.
Are you looking for an answer right now?
Okay, good for them. On behalf of the council, let me express our collective appreciation for you coming and providing this update for us. That we, I think we planned for fifteen to twenty minutes, but we've got, money's work, so thank you. No, no, sorry.
Yeah, we planned for fifteen, twenty minutes.
Thank you.
Can I ask whether, when's the next presentation?
That's a, a good point, we were going to ask, we're, we're, well, we're probably a little early. I mean, this is, this is probably not quite fifty percent of our work is, is done here. Our, our scope was going to do a fifty percent meeting and a ninety-five and I think a hundred percent, so. I think in our original schedule, we had our next meeting mid-December. That scope, or that, that timeline was based on some restrictions that I don't think apply anymore.
Yeah, it's been relaxed because of the council's decision regarding the audit.
So we can certainly meet our schedule and, and come next month, but, but I, I don't know that, that we'll have, we'll, we'll be at that ninety-five percent that, that we were hoping for.
Our two meeting dates for December are the first and the eighth.
I don't think that's realistic.
I think it would be more beneficial for everyone than if, if maybe it was just after the holidays and you could come back with a lot more to give you.
It'd be January, June, late January?
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be in touch and find when that date is.
Okay. Thank you again. Well, with that, then we'll now see if there's any public.
Thirty-second pause to change batteries for this, it's taking a little bit longer than my batteries.
Okay, thirty-second pause, if we can, tend to stretch if you need to.
If you guys don't mind, we're going to, we'll get out of here.
Bet you. Get the road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also feel as a copy of the, of the PowerPoints, we said if anyone wants to see color and all, it's more. I need you a digital copy of.
Perfect, yeah, we'll check it out if we need to.
One more thing if we can?
Sure.
We, we talked about, we, we have some, some correspondence that, that we've put together to some of these property owners north of town that.
You can put it on City Letterhead.
Yeah, I'd like to have, you know, your guys' blessings that, that this goes out, and so, what would be the best way? Should we get that to Jill and have her?
Does the council approve that, the council?
Yes, we need to know.
Yep, I see an affirm, affirmation from the collective. So, yeah, just get in touch with Jill and we'll provide whatever support you need.
Okay, great.
And same with Warehouser, if you would like our assistance with that, let us know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And you said twenty to, twenty to forty acres?
Yeah, and again, that's going to vary based on what sort of collection system we're looking at. If we go at low pressure, it's going to be lower acres.
I also feel like the, we're having a land study done right now to assess the soil's ability to, to accept that wire, so it'll depend on what kind of soils we're in. That's why there's such a big range.
Thank you.
All right, we bet you. Well, now, let's, are we ready for the recording? Let's proceed to our public comment, I'll show you the agenda. Thank you, Debbie.
I'm so glad you're here. He always hands it to me, zero zilch.
Oh, all right. And let's quickly proceed to our city business. Item number one, council to consider resolution sixteen dash twenty-sixteen, which is, involves the, the establishment of the twenty-seventeen tax levy rate, which is required.
But right now, after reading it, and for the people of Vator, I am firmly against the tax levy rate this year coming, because I don't like what's going on with our government, with what I hear off and on, and some of the stuff I can't believe, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. And I just can't go for a tax levy for the citizen of Vator.
We noted, maybe we'd want, all the council members are going to have an opportunity to be heard. Thank you, Debbie, for that. It's pretty straightforward.
My turn? So you guys put together a good budget, I think it's, it's been reviewed, and I believe that Ruth, you found a couple extra, Jill told me you found a couple extra things to bring, to bring the budget down as well?
The engineering cost, the general engineering, yes.
Yeah.
That was three to five, that was not really in there.
So, and that's, that's, that's great, that's brilliant. The budget and levy go hand, hand in hand. The issue with the, with the budget is it didn't allow us to do anything else. We're just, we've got a little over a month, where was it at? A month extra expenditures, correct?
Yes, page seventeen.
Yeah. And our goal is two months extra expenditures to get us, to get us closer to better grants, is that what that was for? Is that correct? Better ability to get better?
The state auditors happy and it puts us in a comfortable position for emergency and it just has, shows the city in good fiscal health.
So, but they also, the, and, and so we have a little over a month, which is, which is great, but we don't have any, anything else. We didn't have, we don't have room for the codification, we didn't have, which is something that over time is going to bring our attorney's costs down and it's going to save us, save us money with the, with, with our clerks being able to find the information that citizens need and businesses need. So, one of these two options allowed us to pay for codification over a two-year period. And I was thinking that if we changed the levy rate to cover half of the codification cost, then we could get that done sooner than later, and it would pay, and it would pay for itself over time.
The tax levy rate document again, in case you don't have it from the last meeting. And there's some here for the public if anybody wants one.
Do you have your first job?
Just an update, you guys got the new code biz, and they both said that they would split it up between two years.
Oh, good, I didn't see that on the, the.
They didn't have it written in, but I asked.
I saw it in the one, but I didn't see it in the other one.
The other one I did ask, and they said yes, they did.
And everyone wants to know, well, what would the, how much would it cost me if we raised the levy to be able to pay for this? And it looks like the average homeowner would have to pay about one dollar and thirty-seven, thirty cents a month to cover that, to do that. Dollar and thirty, one dollar and thirty cents is what your monthly cost would be.
Which one are you looking at, Joe? Percentage?
Yeah, so, so the high, on the high end, most expensive one of these two codifications was nine thousand dollars, paid for over a two-year period, so we would need to cover half of that.
This would be the six point one nine?
So, so for a hundred thousand dollars in property value, your taxes would go up seventeen dollars and forty cents a year. And like I said, I believe that will pay for itself over time. I guess I'm talking, so.
Do you have, here to, your commentary?
Absolutely, I would.
Absolutely, I would get you, well, my question was, you said half, so are you taking the money that, that Ruth found?
No.
To pay the other half, or you're?
It can be paid in two years.
So you're saying over two years in the first half, okay, okay, I thought you were taking the money Ruth had found.
No. So that's my feeling, that, that this is something that needs to happen to get the city where it needs to be.
So you wanted to go increase how much, Joe?
To cover half of it, you're looking at roughly six point five over what we're, what we currently, what we currently charge. Which, given that the highest increase, if you look at our historical values that we've ever increased, is one percent, that is, one percent more than what we currently charge, that is, that would be a, it looks like a big number, but a dollar and a half a month is a small price to pay, in my opinion. But that's my opinion.
Joe, remind me again, how many homes do we have that we collect, that we have to fund, do you know?
It doesn't go by the number of houses, it goes by the property value. We have twenty-five million, three thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars in value, property value, and the rate that we, the, the percentage for the tax is based on that. It's not based on how many numbers of houses, so if you have a house that's worth three hundred thousand dollars, you would pay the seventeen forty times three. Because this is, the, the chart that you have here is based on a hundred thousand dollars in value. If your property is only worth fifty thousand dollars, then you would pay half of that. So it's hard to say per household, it really depends on what the value of your property is.
But we have roughly two hundred and twenty sewer pairs in the city. Not everyone has sewer, so two hundred and fifty houses?
Yeah.
Ish? Twenty-five million divided by two hundred and fifty, so a hundred thousand.
And after two years, when you've paid for the codification, then that revenue could be diverted to street improvement?
We could go on record on anything if you like.
And you could set, set it in an ordinance where the money would go after the codification is paid for.
You could, it would probably be unheard of, but you could remove it as well.
I don't know.
Could you not?
I don't know if anyone's ever asked that.
Has anyone ever done that before?
I have no clue, I've never asked. In theory, you would think you would be able to, but.
In Vator, that we've said we'd probably want to experiment, to be the first.
There you go.
If we felt.
It's a possibility.
Interest of time, we've heard from three council members, and Ruth, do you have other thoughts that you'd like to share?
Well, I'm not in favor of it, is it?
I'm just paying my last half today.
Okay, so, Mike, do we have further from you?
You know, I've really been, this has been really tough for me, because I hate taxes. But I wish that there was a way that the property taxes could go up for the properties that are not doing improvements, instead of the properties that are doing improvements. I don't know if there's any way of doing that, to me, that's backwards than everybody ever thinks, but the better you do on your property, the more taxes you have to pay on it. Whereas the, the people that are leaving their properties, garbage everywhere and trashed and. and unfinished, so that they don't have to raise their taxes, is, it hurts everybody else. But when you do break it down to seventeen dollars a year, and that takes care of that, the, I'm gonna say it wrong, codification, is that it? Seventeen dollars a year is not a lot of money. If I can remember right, I think that's two packs of cigarettes. I don't smoke, but two packs of cigarettes, and now you're able to get online and, and see what rules we actually have in this town, and... So I think I'm with you, Joe.
I look at this, I look at these budget numbers, and I look at our attorney, our attorney's fees, and they're like, it's like thirteen hundred dollars a month or something. I mean, it's like twelve, fifteen grand a year is, is what it is. And if we can get that down, I mean, that's an ongoing cost. If there's something we can do to save, save that attorney time, have Pan hundreds of dollars an hour for her to dig through our paperwork to try to figure out what our laws are, I think that's gonna pay for itself over time. That's how I look at it.
Would you agree with that, Joe, based on our...
That's what she has expressed to me as well.
Fascinating.
I also think, I'm opposite of Andy, I think that the, the new government that's in there, I think that a lot of taxes are going to go down.
Let's not, let's not go there.
Oh, it was already brought up, so...
Just let it, let it, let it go.
I hate to do that.
But sure.
I'm just getting tired of the property tax going up and up and up, period. Maybe if we say no once in a while and stop it, it'll help a little bit, but it's just getting so that every time you turn around reading the papers, it goes up, not down. That's why I said that I am firmly against an increase. Some people can afford a dollar, some people can't afford a dollar or pennies, period.
You know, in a big city, they have, oh, I'm sorry, Andy. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But that's the way I feel about it. I mean, I'm trying to look out for the, the low, real low-income people. I don't do too bad, I've got a nice pension, but there's a lot of people who don't have a dime or a penny, and that's who the people I'm looking out for.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, Vader doesn't have a lot of knobs to tweak, you know? Even going to Toledo, Winlock, Castle Rock, they've got retail, just the grocery stores alone. They have millions of dollars in revenue coming in, generating taxes for the city. Vader doesn't have, doesn't have the, those other things that we can adjust. This is all, this is all we've got right now.
That's it, Joe, is because he thought, if we start raising taxes, that just keeps people wanting to come in to have a business anymore. I understand what you're talking about very well.
I, I, and I see what you're saying, too. There's a, it's a balancing act.
I was in business for the city here for several years, and I was one of the biggest incomes that our city had, plus the Tapper. That was the two of us. Now they're both gone.
I just feel if we don't do this, I mean, it's gonna, this is not an attractive item, it's not exciting, not to everybody, I think Jill finds it exciting, but she's probably one of the only ones. But it's just gonna get, keep getting pushed off and pushed off, and, and, you know, if we don't have the money this year, and if we don't have the money next year, we don't have the, next, the year after that, when's it ever gonna get done? The sooner we get it done, the sooner we can start saving money other places.
Well, myself, I agree with you to a certain extent, but I'd like, like to wait until next year. That's my, probably next year I would say, okay. But this year, with the way that things are in the economy, we don't know what's gonna happen to the economy. I watch the news and I'm worried, period. I am.
Okay.
Joe, can you remind me again, how many times you get phone calls a week about the code?
Well, like someone, you'd asked me before, how often does somebody call and ask what the code is, and I estimate it once a week for myself. However, how many times do I have to go into the ordinances and try to find something? Just about every day. And the count, and the attorney, every time I, we have a question for her, every time we need anything done, she has to go start with our ordinances.
And how often do you contact the attorney each week?
Every week's different. Average, two to three times a week.
Okay.
Just trying to be some kind of a guest on that ballpark, but... I'm here again. Have you ever seen one of these books? The codification books?
Oh, I've never, personally, I've never seen the book, but I go online to other cities and I can use their system to find what they need.
I took the time this week to go to our sister cities and look at the book. And Toledo's was the nicest, and it is a good-looking book, it's only about that thick. Easily, Jill could go through it in a second, has a great index in it. All of the, all of the cities said there are a lot of our ordinances, you don't have to have codified. So it's not like if you have a thousand, all of them are gonna be done, it'll just be a portion, you don't do your budget in there and a whole bunch of stuff like that. But in Jill's defense, that book is really nice. I mean, it's, it's well worth it. And, and they also said that there were like, they had fifteen of them made, and each council person had a book, and their police department and their public works people, because they were always coming up with questions and that kind of thing. And in speaking with them, some of them did not go online, they did not pay for the service online, which I know you guys were talking about last time, was kind of a question of the expense.
Yeah, I think they say five hundred a year is what they're saying for it.
Yeah, yeah. And Michelle was saying that it's just not bad at all, just update theirs as need be, and then she just gets everybody's book and you sign it out and bring it in, and she just replaces what needs to be done. But in Jill's defense, it's a, it's a, it's a nice book, and in Joe's, I know Joe's pushing for it, too. It is, the money's really expensive, once you see the book, you're like, oh. But I'm sure there's a lot of work goes into it.
Well, I'm not against that, I know we need that, I'm all for that, I'm just trying to get a feel of really where we wanna do the property taxes at. Good. Everybody's comfortable with, no, it's not, it doesn't just affect this border, it affects all the town. So, it's kind of where I'm, crunching numbers over here in my head.
Well, you know it's agonizing, and we go through this every year. And so, I've seen it many times before, but I know that we could probably bring our hands together for an hour, but...
Can we, it seems like the next two things on the agenda kinda fall back into that? Can we push number one down to number three?
We can do whatever the council...
So that we can talk about the proposed budget and other ideas?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
So I hate to say, yes, let's raise it, and then all of a sudden we go through the budget again, and we...
Yeah.
There's something, and, oh, we don't have to.
The council, care to amalgamate items number two and three? Carry those out and then come back to conclude with item one? We could do that.
Sure. Two and three?
Yeah. I see three out of four affirmations.
Oh.
Okay, well then, let's do that.
Would it be appropriate to have a motion to table it until, until the end?
I don't think it needs a motion.
You don't think so?
We're not changing the content, we're just changing order. So, well with that, then the next item is a public hearing on the 2017 proposed budget, required, scheduled today, and at your time, obviously. So we could note for the public record that at seven twenty, we would...
We are supposed to open and close a public hearing with a motion.
Okay, then I would submit that we hear a motion to initiate a public hearing at seven twenty. You could establish a timeframe for it, or you could just get feedback on the budget until you feel like you've heard everything the public has to say, and then close the public hearing. With that, my...
Let's do that, let's just open it up.
Put it in the form of a motion.
If I can make a motion to have the citizens evader that are interested in speaking for the, to have their, have their time.
Okay.
At completion of that, we'll close any.
Okay. Heard the motions voted by Mr. Shai to engage in a public hearing. Upon approval of the motion, during which time, any input or feedback from the public would be entertained, and upon conclusion of that, the public hearing would be closed. And we have a second for that motion?
Oh, seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any commentary from other council members to the vote? Here again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion's carried, thank you. Well, with that action, then I would temporarily adjourn the conversation on item one, and we would initiate a public hearing, as noted, at seven twenty-two PM. And we'll now invite members of the public who may have had an opportunity to examine the budget, and if they have suggestions, ideas, thoughts on it, to share with council members. It's your public hearing.
At our last meeting, we talked about the excavator. Did that come up again, or have you thought about surplusing the excavator, and is that possibly some of the codification money?
We had directed our city clerk to look into that, and I don't know if she's had time or not.
I haven't gotten an answer yet, I haven't been able to figure out, I've worked on it, but haven't been able to figure out where to get the, a good answer. So, no, it is not finished yet.
But we have looked into the matter in the past, and it makes a difference if the excavator is functioning enough. And currently, it's in the or not category. So there have been at least one interested party in it that we're aware of, but there's been no obvious effort to extract a value from that interested party. And it could be sold for scrap, but just share that with the council.
Now that you've shared that, is it open for bids, or how is this all working?
No.
This is like bullet teeth, there are people, come on, talk to me.
It's a process.
It's a process, yes, I understand.
It's been surplus.
It's already been surplus?
Yeah, sometime. But we've repaired it, and it was used for a day or two, or maybe a week, and so it's just not been an impetus to actually consummate.
I heard that it only runs for eight minutes.
Yeah, I think it ran for a day or two, depended on what the use was, yeah. But it was fixed at one point in time.
And what's it doing?
It is sitting out, enjoying the weather.
No, is it?
Heats.
It overheats?
Yeah, it overheats.
Yeah. That's been the ongoing problem.
All right, again.
But I think there was a similar question, I wasn't here, but I gather that there was observation about a container out at the Public Works property, that's surplus, potentially, it's been abandoned. And the city is more than willing, the administration, to explore options, whatever that means. But it's an indeterminate potential figure amount, if the concept is to obtain funding that would provide some monies for the codification process, but we can't know at this moment what that might be. Okay, other public comment?
I have just one more. Steven, can I ask anything? Are you gonna ask anything? I saw your one more.
That's a question, it counts, isn't it?
You're not the only two here, I'm just asking, are you gonna ask anything, or do I need to ask everything? Is there any employee increases this year?
There was, yes.
This is my stop, should we look at this?
Yeah, if you remember, that might have been right before you...
This chart?
Right before you got it, maybe even. Yeah, there was a five, six-year, six-year plan?
Going now into 2021.
Put in, put in place by ordinance, that it would be, that there were step increases to get our employees in line market value, because they were under, underpaid. So that, that's in there as well.
It's incorporated into...
You can see that on page...
Oh, you know what, I don't think it's in the, oh, yeah, it is, the very last page.
You can see the sixteen and seventeen number.
Very last page, here we go. That's what they will be this year. This year, yes. It doesn't say what the amount increase is, but that is what, they will, everyone will receive an increase. Public Works will receive an increase. Everyone receives an increase, I think, except the sewer operator, who wasn't gonna receive an increase until like 2018 or something, because his was already set higher than everybody else.
And I was looking in the budget on the expenditures, page twenty-three on our new one. Where you can see the budgeted 2016 number and the estimate 2017 number, and you can just get a quick look at what the difference is there. Halfway down under municipal, municipal.
But you have to remember that...
But some of it's sewer, some of it comes out of sewer budgets.
Some of it's paid out of sewer as well, some people are paid out of the street funds, some are paid...
But this will be, this is the general, general fund relevancy here.
Tonight? Is it tonight?
What, I'm sorry?
That we have to vote on the budget?
No, we have to vote on the property tax levy rate.
Okay.
Has to be passed by November thirtieth. And this is our last planned council meeting of the month. You guys, in theory, you should pass it tonight, if for some reason you can't come up with a decision, you'd have to call another special meeting before the end of the month in order to pass the levy.
Okay. And then the budget?
The budget, you have until December thirty-first.
Okay. So the excavator, we can still work on the excavator and figure it out?
Yeah, but the property tax levy rate is what needs to be set.
Okay, but we have to have a public hearing, and we have to have this public hearing.
Yes.
So...
Yes, this is the second of three public hearings that are required.
Is there a timeframe? Do you have a specific timeframe for the public hearing?
As soon as you're done.
Okay, well, since you're done.
Okay, well, then I would await council action.
You don't have to live within the city limits, anybody can comment.
No, you can, sure.
But the interest of...
Yes.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing at seven thirty.
Thirty. Yeah. Close. Okay, we've heard a motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to conclude this public hearing at seven thirty PM. And we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Creer. Secuted by Mrs. Creer. Any complaints, concerns about that hearing then? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Well, now, in the spirit of the, Mr. Shai's original motion, we'll proceed with item three, council discussion of 2017 proposed budget, which I suspect ought to include the final considered action on item one. But this discussion, per the agenda, would include introduction of a possible indisposal site that might, I suspect, be intended to generate some revenue for the community. So, it was here the last meeting, but I have been made aware of the concept of perhaps inviting the county who are discontinuing the chipper, have indicated they would come and pick up the treaty limbs from property owners in the city, but they won't do it where it's currently located. And so, they would if they didn't have to bank in their big truck. Jill knows more about that.
Well, I was restating what Mike said, he's actually...
So what he told me is there's a, they bring in like a 53-foot truck, back-end dump truck, and then they load it, and an excavator, and they load it all into that, they haul it to a specific place in the county where they have a belly grinder, which then grinds it all up and turns it into chips or whatever, which then the county uses. And, and there is no charge for that, for them to come get it from us. Then I, which made me start thinking, if we were to find a better location, the, the tree, that area out there and the service, the free, take your limbs out there for free is an amazing thing, I've used it before, but it also is a huge cost to the city. I mean, John's out there working quite a bit to clean it up and get it, the chipper, like you said, the county's not loaning that chipper out anymore. In fact, they're getting ready to sell it. So, we won't have that to do it. So then it's going to cost us even more to, if we are going to chip it up. So, my thought was, being in business myself, my thought is, we charge to bring in much less than it would charge the dump charges. So it's more convenient, it's cheaper, but it's no longer free. And then, that gives us a revenue, we take, and then the county comes and takes it away. So the, the main thing that I see coming in that would cost is just John going out there once a day to make sure that it's...
No garbage.
No garbage and no rock or concrete or anything like that.
John would have to go out there every time somebody came to dump. He would have to be there. In order to charge for it, it would have to be locked up. Somebody would have to go and open it. So he would have to come every time and potentially wait for them to unload their truck and then lock it back up, so...
Or could they not come, pay the fee, whatever it is? And then they issued a key and then bring the key back?
That's a possibility, but then how much garbage are you going to get in there if there's nobody there overseeing?
Yeah.
Well, the, the worst-case scenario is we're in the same boat as we are now. I mean, nobody's out there watching it. So I just see that it would increase revenue a little bit, a little bit more. If we have the cheaters, we have the cheaters and we still deal with it the same way that we deal with it out there. But we're also in a, in a location that the county can come and get it, clean it, take it.
Well, now, if we got cheaters, we would maybe keep a register of who's come and have issued a key.
Who's coming and going.
Because it'd be in the gated area.
Yeah, but there would be the initial cost also of gating, that's just something to think about.
Yeah.
It's not a huge cost, but it's a cost.
But we'd have a...
I do my limbs on Saturday.
So...
I do my limbs on Sunday.
Uh-huh.
John will be down there on Saturday and Sunday to open the gate for me. Michael, you're solitary. I guess that would be my only question. That is a good point. We all do ours on the weekend. Yeah, that's very true. Everybody's kind of out working during the week, either gathering it, but it usually goes down there on Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah.
I know a lot of places, they have the, the little box where you drop your money in, in a little envelope on the honor system.
Still, it wouldn't grant them access to the thing.
Well, you would lock it, it would be the honor system. Well, I can't. Some of us are honorable, I have my little envelope in there.
You and I are okay in the council.
I'm not trying to come on your idea, Mike, it's a good idea. But that, that is a good point.
Yeah, the weekend is an issue and, you know, depending...
I'm just afraid if I make it Monday through Friday during just normal days, that that's going to get all stacked up at everybody's house. And we're only open to take money from nine to one, so it'll only be mornings on a Tuesday. Unless you did, unless you did maybe, I don't mean to speak out of turn, but maybe did two Saturdays a month or something for specifically doing that. Oh, that's a thought, you know, like, yeah, the county has their little thing.
The other issue that we'd have to address is where?
Right. We have had some discussion, Jill and I, and then we brought John into the equation. And obviously, we are all aware of what options we may have, there are many. The two that emerge is the McMurphy Park. And so, Jill, did you have copies for the present here? This map shows a flood zone, which you wouldn't want to engage in such activity, and it shows in pink the perimeter of McMurphy Park. And our threesome, as we thought about it, as you come in the entrance, you would take an immediate left into this little thicket in the corner and maybe prepare a site where a truck could go in and not have to back up. And then it would be somewhat out of sight and it would be out of the flood zone. But that's about the only location that wouldn't... You've got this zone over to the right, of course, but that's edging on the flood zone.
Yeah, and driving across.
Yeah, right.
There's a lot of field there.
Probable visual for whatever activities are out, car shows and such.
The school property is...
Well, the school's property.
The school's property.
One of the things, try that dump and be careful with Dean Evans. Next to his fence.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to get near that. But I think it's doable. But then you've got the park down at Park Street, down by your house. And it would require that there be some access to it and, you know, some U-shaped...
Straight down E Street.
I can assure you, the residents wouldn't want that.
Well, if that, down at Park Road down there, there is areas down there, but the only thing is, to get into the area, first you'd have to get a, probably the bulldozers would go in there and pick up the old stumps that are there, because that was all trees at one time.
Right. I don't think it's feasible.
It wasn't greatly, that was a really first park for the city of Ayr.
And so, with the truck traffic and all of that...
Well, the truck, oh, the, wait a minute. The truck traffic, as in the people going to it?
Sure, I mean, the coming and going, so we need to pave that road eventually, but... So, I guess the bottom line is, as far as if you want feedback from the mayor and the staff, McMurphy Park represents about the only viable...
And that's the best idea that I can even think of today, that's available, it's a city property, is by that corner, because it goes down quite a bit and you've got enough room to drive the trucks in there or dump truck, whatever. But I hate to see him tear up McMurphy Park down there, because that's where the septic tank was supposed to be, in that area.
Well, the septic could also be over in here, the septic could also be over in here.
Yeah, well, this was all, this was all right here.
Yeah.
That was approved for septic tank and the rest...
Yeah, but so was it here, too? It was okay up here. But obviously visually, you prefer it down here.
That's when I had all the dirt hauled in for, special dirt hauled in for the septic tank round fields.
But I'm not sure that this project would preclude that use for septic.
It might not.
It might not, right. So anyway, that's your option, and I can share that with you.
Something to think about.
So, but as far as projecting how much revenue that might generate?
It's not, Steve, it's not.
It's not in our budget program.
You're right.
I had some questions unrelated to the, to that. On the, in the sewer portion of the expenditures?
What page have you got?
This is page 28 of the new, newer, the sewer postage.
Yes.
Why, why, why did it go up when we didn't even spend?
Um, well...
That's a lot of postage.
Because that's not an accurate number. What happened, that's one of the things, when I had Diane do it, check on, she said, "What's going on here?" We have actually spent closer to eight, oh no, excuse me, I just added, well, I was pulling it out of the wrong line item, I was pulling it out of the office equipment and supplies, which you see has gone over its budgeted amount, over $500 in postage there. And so...
So it won't be 200, it'll be 196, it'll be...
It'll be closer to seven or eight hundred.
Okay.
We'll have to buy some more postage this month, so...
Okay.
And the reason it went up a little bit was just anticipating that postage usually gets more expensive, but at the same time, you're right, that we didn't use all of that 1,500 this year.
Well, it makes sense, I was just thinking, why did, we only used 13%?
Oh, I appreciate that, those are the kind of questions that we need to answer.
Okay, so that's good. And then, page 25, I wanted to know what the engineering number, it was 8,000 last year, we, seven, six on next year on my form, what was it going to get adjusted to? From, you said it was, that was going to change? That was...
I guess, I'm not sure now that I'm looking at it. When Ruth and I were talking, I was under the impression that it was 8,000 still for this year, but it's not, it's already at 6,000. So, looks like we've already reduced it some, we could probably reduce it. I know I've got another bill in there for about 1,500, somewhere around that, so...
It's pretty close.
Probably going to end up around 5,000.
That's pretty close.
So, yeah, there may not be as much there as I initially...
What about the item above, the planning and development?
Planning and development, that's a good one. The mayor might want to address that. That has to do with our, the reason we kept that up there, we actually had it higher initially because we have our comprehensive plan update needs to get done. And can't get CDBG funds to get it, we've been through all of that, and so we need to find a way to fund it. So it's, this year, we haven't used a lot of planning funds, although the mayor has a proposal from the planner to spend the rest of that money to get started on the plan update and then to hopefully finish it next year with the same amount staying in the budget so that we can get our comprehensive plan done, like we're supposed to.
Okay.
Yep, well said.
Looking for justification.
Feel like it's something that would be wise for us, knowing that eventually...
Bannedated by the state, we're supposed to do it. No one's going to die if we don't, but we will, if we don't have it updated on when it's supposed to be, then it can affect our ability to get funding and other things.
Speaking about updating, what was the computer program that you were talking?
The billing program? Is that what you're talking about?
Something that they are not going to support us anymore?
Oh, that's the sewer billing program.
I work on that.
Yeah.
Oh, you're working on this?
Yes, they've been telling us for, ever since I've started working here, that they're not going to support it anymore. However, they have gotten rid of all their people who know how to support the current billing program that we have, there's only one person left there at that office that knows how to do it, so we have to call when it's a full moon and you have to stand on one leg and touch your nose and call.
So once he's gone, that's it, period.
Once he retires.
And he is really pushing hard, saying, "We just can't," and especially with Windows 10, he's saying that's causing so many problems with this old DOS program, and they just said, "We just, we'll milk," he said, "we'll milk it, you know, a little bit longer," but he says, "It's just ridiculous, you know, because we just can't, it's not compatible." But that has to be funded by the sewer rates, and so that's another topic.
That's another topic.
To address that.
Doesn't necessarily have to happen to me.
I found an alternative program that costs significantly less than what we use now. But anyway, it's ongoing.
Yep.
So it may save us some money if, if our employees like it.
Really?
I've started looking at, but I haven't had a lot of time since you sent it over to look at it, so...
It's, the one-time fee is $3,000 less and the annual fee comes out to about a quarter of what we're paying right now, with both the accounting and the sewer software. So the whole system would get redone, so...
So then, does that still have to come out of sewer?
Well, if we redid the financial system, that would have to come out of the general fund.
And sewer, because we're doing sewer billing through it also?
I don't know. The billing portion would have to be paid for by the sewer and the financial system portion would have to be paid for by the current, however that works out.
But it sounds, it sounds like we could work with that.
But you said we're paying 1,500 a year right now for the financial software. This package comes out to be about 825 a year for both sewer and financial.
I think we paid about $1,000 for that financial system five years ago.
So if you split it in half, it'd only be about 400 a year per, for each sewer and general, so anyway, working on it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jill.
That could save some money.
But would we have to go with the financial system? Could we just do the billing system?
Could.
Just because I know this financial system and the reporting, some of it is a little clunky, but the annual report, it saves me so much time.
The marketing choir for this shows a city clerk and she's got her hands in the air and it says, "City clerks love it," so...
Well, good.
So...
You guys are willing to pay for me to get trained on a new system, that's fine. Do what you guys want.
Okay, well, that's interesting. All right. Well, it's, being the clock watcher that I am, it's 10 minutes to eight. I appreciate the insights and commentary about our budget. Do we have any thoughts or budget observations from the left side of the council? We've already done a lot of research. Well, then I would, I invite the council then to... Well, then I would invite the council then to address, in order to make progress tonight, item number one involving the property taxes. I think we've already discussed it. I think we've gotten a sense of council's individual perspectives after having contemplated the budget and the potential limb revenue generation. Is there somebody willing to submit a motion for some action, which we have to do?
I'd like to ask Ruth, I see her down there, she's rapidly just cranking away. I was wondering if she found any, any magic or anything she wanted to share with us. No?
About, with this being my first budget, it's, it's a learning experience for one. I mean, on this budget over there, but it's different. I'm not, I see some things that I feel that we can still cut out of the budget, but I'm not sure without the knowledge, you know? I spoke with Jill today on a few things, but, so I'm kind of torn. Like I said, I'm all for the codification, I understand we have to pay for that, we did that. So, yeah, it's kind of more a math. I've been crunching the numbers over here again on the different, raising the taxes to different levels here and... Still not convinced that we need to go to the six point one-nine. I'm more comfortable maybe with the four point one-nine, but that's just my opinion. I guess I...
How, what'd that do? How bad is it that we don't have the full two months? Because without, without having the full two months, we still have enough in the budget to take care of the codification, half of the codification for the one year.
You're not only required to have one, huh?
Yeah.
Yes, one month is a requirement. Two months is the gold star standard. So, it's not bad to have one month only. One month is a lot better than a lot of government stuff. So, one month means we're doing, we're getting checked off and saying, "That's okay, mayor's okay there."
And with, go ahead, Jill, sorry.
I was going to say that at, at the rate that Ruth suggests, we would only be, if this price was the full price, and it might be a little less than that, we'd only be fifteen hundred short of half of the, the first half payment. And we could, we would still have a month, we would still have over a month of surplus if we pulled the fifteen hundred from there.
The city could aggressively try to surplus the items we've discussed?
Can I ask a question of the residents that are here? Is that appropriate? I know we already had a meeting about those ones, but what is your guys' take on your taxes raising? Are you for it?
You can ask me.
That's a, that's a horrible question.
You can ask me, I hate it, but...
I'm all, yeah, I, I'm with, Michael here, I don't like my taxes going up. But all on the other hand, when you hear Joe put it at seventeen dollars a year, that's only a burger, I mean, and I have more than one property, so I get to do the seventeen three or four times, so I'm not the normal person, but I, it does give me heartburn to, to do it. Personally, do you?
Well, I'm in a position, I, I can afford it. It wouldn't bother me.
Well, I ask because it's, affects them, it affects all, you know, so I kind of just want to get a little bill, you know? With that, then I would be okay with the Joe's proposal.
What, which was the?
Six.
I will make a motion.
Make sure you put the exact percentage in your motion.
I will make a motion to set the 2017 tax levy rate. The increased percentage will be six point... Six point one-nine percent.
Six point one-nine percent.
So, you're approving resolution number twenty dash two sixteen?
Oh, I am sorry, we had a...
Including the rate being set at... I'm just, I thought that's what you said.
That's what I heard.
I thought that's what you said, but I just wanted to...
A resolution of the city of Vader, Washington, setting the property tax levy rate for the calendar year 2017 in accordance with RCW eight-four dot five-five dot one-two-zero in the amount of an increase six point one-nine percent.
Heard a motion submitted by Mr. Shai to approve resolution number twenty dash twenty-sixteen as read and at six point one-nine percent. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Creer. At this point, it's an opportunity for council to share any additional thoughts, observations, concerns?
When you were first talking, you were talking about six point five?
This is still, this is still fifty percent.
Okay.
All right, any other thoughts? Hearing none, then let's put it to a vote. All in favor of, of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same side? Okay, well, that motion is carried.
Is there, is Mr. Rosen not voting? You're not voting? You're voting no or you're not voting?
No.
You're voting a no? He's voting no?
Yeah, no.
Three to one.
I have to, I have to...
You have to clarify that, yeah. So, thank you for your vote, it's been approved, thank you for your action. It was difficult as it has been.
Do we need to adjust the budget to include that codification?
It will be updated, you'll have one more version of the budget before our next meeting and we'll have all that included in that additional revenue.
Okay, good, we'll see you then.
Thank you very much for your action. I reflect the attitude of consensus here in the public as well, so thank you. I believe it will be of benefit to the community in the next two years and it may eventually contribute to improvement in our streets and our parks in the long run. So, thank you again. With that, I think we've covered our agenda items, and so I would declare this council meeting adjourned at seven fifty-eight p.m.